It's meeting to order. Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Vice Chair Benton. Commissioner Brooks.
Present.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Haynes.
Here.
Commissioner Hodge. Commissioner Latour. Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Vickers.
Present.
And Chair Vogel.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the prior meeting's minutes, please.
I move that we approve the minutes from September the eighth, two thousand twenty-two, Commission meeting.
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Benton.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Hodge. Latour. McDonald.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Vickers.
Yes.
And Vogel.
Yes.
Minister approved.
We have a reading of the agenda.
Following is the consent agenda for Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. You have three items on consent deferral. First is item A, file number S eight sixty-seven oh nine, Merrimott Circle Preliminary Platte, west end of Merrimott Boulevard, west of Chenal Valley Drive. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on October third requesting this item be deferred to the November tenth agenda. Staff supports that request. Item number one, Z ninety-seven fourteen, Haynes Bed and Breakfast Special Use Permit, sixty-nine oh one Shamrock Drive. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on September thirtieth requesting this item be deferred to November tenth. Staff supports that request. And item seven, Z ninety-seven fifteen, August Renewals Hyde Park Project PRD, southeast corner of West twenty-sixth and Jefferson Streets. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on September twentieth requesting this application be deferred to the December eighth agenda, and staff supports that request. Next are the items on consent approval. Item number two, file number Z ninety-seven twenty-four, Hobbs Duplex Number One Conditional Use Permit, ten eleven South Woodrow Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number three, Z ninety-seven twenty-five, Hobbs Duplex Number Two Conditional Use Permit, ten twenty-one South Woodrow Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number four, Z ninety-seven twenty-six, FT Investments LLC Beauty Shop Conditional Use Permit, sixty-one oh five Father Tributhe Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP to allow a beauty barber shop use on the O-three zone property at sixty-one oh five Father Tributhe Street, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number five, Z ninety-seven twenty-seven, Danforth Accessory Dwelling Conditional Use Permit, two twenty-two Rosetta Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number six, Z sixty-nine seventy-three I, lots two and three, The Villages at Colonel Glenn Revised PCD, twelve one twenty-one Colonel Glenn Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PCD revision subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs E and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And that concludes the consent agenda as we're moving item number eight to regular.
Right. May we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda including all staff comments and conditions.
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Benton.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Hodge. Latour.
Yep.
McDonald.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Vickers.
Yes.
And Vogel.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. If your item was on the consent agenda, your item has passed and you do not have to stay unless you really want to. So thank you all if you're an applicant and your item was on the consent agenda. We'll move on to the regular agenda, B, C, eight.
First item on consent agenda, item B, or regular agenda, item B, file number Z ninety-seven seventeen. This is the Powell Short Term Rental, PDC located at Three Dove Circle. The applicant proposes to rezone this zero point two eight acre property located at Three Dove Circle from R-two Single Family District to PDC Planned District Commercial to allow use of the property as a short term rental with a maximum stay of fourteen days. The owner will not reside in the residence and the entire residence will be rented as one unit. This property is located just north of Interstate six thirty between Princess Drive to the north and Marguerite Lane to the south. The property contains a one thousand sixty-nine square foot, one-story brick structure with three bedrooms. There's an existing shed located at the northwest portion of the property that will continue to be used for storage only. The driveway extends from Dove Circle, which provides three parking spaces, and staff feels that that is sufficient to serve the proposed use. The applicant notes that meals will not be provided to guests and standard trash pickup will be through the City of Little Rock Trash Collection. Staff does not support the requested PDC zoning. Staff does not believe the request is reasonable and that the proposed commercial use is not appropriate for this location. The property is designated as RL or Residential Low Density on the city's future land use plan and is bordered in all directions by single-family homes. Staff feels the introduction of a commercial short term rental will be out of character with the overall area. And staff believes this type of short term rental would be more appropriately located on the outer edge of a single-family subdivision in a more transitional area and not in the center of a single-family neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested PDC zoning request.
Is the applicant present for item B? Thank you. Please come to the podium. What is customary is the applicant gets a chance to speak or they can defer to the opposition. So if you would like to speak, you will have twenty minutes, and the opposition in total will have twenty minutes as well.
Can you repeat the reasons why it was denied again? I heard some of it. I was trying to listen.
You have not been denied. Staff did not recommend approval of your application.
Okay. And can you repeat the reasons why they weren't recommended?
What I heard was that they expected or desired to have the property more on the edge of the neighborhood rather than in the center of the neighborhood. Staff, if that's incorrect, y'all can correct me.
That's correct. We feel that this use is inappropriate in the middle of a single-family neighborhood and would be more appropriate in a more transitional area on the outer edge of neighborhoods.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would say for that, it is located just right up Hughes off of Bluebird and, or Bluebird and Hughes. So, I mean, I could see why you would say it's in the middle of a residential area, but it's just right up the road from here. And I don't really see why it would be such an issue in the neighborhood that I live in. It's actually in a little cul-de-sac as well.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Please.
So you stated, you live in this, this community?
Do I live in the area?
Yes.
Yes, I lived there at the time, but I'm actually getting ready to move to Baltimore, which is why I wanted to use the home as an Airbnb. My husband just received a contract in Baltimore and I broke my foot. So I needed to kind of do something to supplement the income temporarily.
Did you notify your neighbors in the community that you?
Yes, I had to get what's called an abstract to send letters, certified letters to all of my neighbors that are within two hundred feet. And it was about twenty-six of them.
Any feedback from them?
No, and I don't see any of them here in opposition either.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners like to ask the applicant any questions? Hearing none. Applicant, you have plenty of time remaining if you'd like to continue.
I don't have anything else. Did anyone else have any questions or any comments or anything?
I don't hear any. There are two people here in opposition to your application. We will give them a chance to speak as well. And if you'd like to come back up afterwards to
Okay.
Speak on behalf of yourself, you'll be welcome to. We'll start with Makisha Wood. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yes, that was correct. My name is Makisha Wood, and I fulfilled my dream of becoming a homeowner in January of this year, purchasing my first home located on Dove Circle. I chose Cardinal Heights in the Briarwood neighborhood because it is a quiet, family-friendly, family-oriented area. In July, our neighborhood was notified of the application for the short-term rental property right next door to me at Three Dove Circle. While I can appreciate the entrepreneurial spirit of a homeowner creating a source of income from a rental property, I do not feel like a short-term rental is an appropriate option. Having a short-term rental right next door to me and quite frankly, right outside of my bedroom window would be akin to living right next door to a motel. This is not what I signed up for, and this is not what I spent my life savings for. Out of the many concerns I have, safety is my top concern. As neighbors, we've come to know each other and look out for each other. We know each other. We recognize each other's vehicles. For the most part, we know each other's schedules and routines. When we see something that just doesn't look right, we reach out to our neighborhood and share our concerns. We have an excellent online community group on social media where we share information. We have no way to vet the people that will be coming to stay next to us and among us, especially if they are only in and out for a brief period of time. Having a short-term rental in the neighborhood guarantees that we will have no way of determining if the person staying there are legitimate renters or someone committing a crime of opportunity, throwing parties, selling or manufacturing drugs, et cetera. Given the recent crime events in our area of Little Rock, it is not a concern that we take lightly when we look out for one another. And what recourse is do we have when issues arise? Contact the host who is nowhere near the property, and as Ms. Powell mentioned, she'll be in Baltimore, Maryland. So if they don't respond in the sixty minutes proposed, do we, do we contact our local police and tax our already stretched thin resources? Then there's the traffic. If you've ever been to Dove Circle, you already know it's a small cul-de-sac and has very limited room when parking on the street. Parking would become a logistical nightmare with the potential of vehicles making access to the cul-de-sac even more difficult. Also a concern is traffic at all times of the day and night. Having a short-term rental will also drive our property values down as it will make it less desirable for anyone to invest in our neighborhood or start their family in our neighborhood because they will be basically living next to a motel. This is a residential neighborhood, not a commercial real estate opportunity. At the end of the day, we as neighbors just want to live in peace and having the security of knowing our neighbors around us. Please decline the application for a short-term rental at Three Dove Circle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Julia Hill. I am the president of the Briarwood Area Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the neighbors who are unable to make the meeting this afternoon. Prior to this meeting, I forwarded letters from the owners of all the homeowner-occupied homes in the area of this proposed STR. All of these neighbors are adamantly opposed to the approval of this request, as well as all neighbors in the surrounding area. I also included a map of rental properties in this area of Cardinal Heights. I'm not going to explain the icons. If you saw my map, which hopefully was passed around, everyone saw this. The orange icon shows an STR that is currently not and still not registered with the city. This STR is only one block away from this proposed site. What this map does not show is that this is a very diverse area on almost every measurable scale, making the accomplishments of these neighbors even more impressive. Both homeowners and renters have been working tirelessly, forgive me, over the past decade to reduce crime and build a strong sense of community. While the dramatic decrease of crime in the area is well documented and publicly available, what is less externally visible but more important and impressive are the gains we have made to come together as a neighborhood and build a strong sense of community. Our success in forming strong community bonds and looking out for each other can only be seen by either spending time in the area or seeing the interactions on our social media sites, so much so that a number of former renters have chosen to purchase homes in our neighborhood. I firmly believe that adding another STR to this area will take us past our tipping point, moving us beyond our capacity to maintain the strong sense of community that we have achieved. There is no way to have a relationship with people who are constantly in and out. This is evidenced by the deleterious impacts STRs have had in many other established neighborhoods in cities across the country, causing numerous permanent residents to move out of these cities. Over the years, I have been contacted by many potential homeowners asking about the street or area of a home they are interested in buying. Over the past five years, every single one of those potential homeowners have asked me about STRs in the area. Please let me assure you that this area, no one in this area, is interested in living next door to an STR, and having one will not encourage other potential homeowners to purchase a home for their family here. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, would you like to use any of your remaining time to?
Commissioner, I have a question for the, the young lady that just sat down. Yes. You made a statement that adding more to the neighborhood, more STRs to the neighborhood, do you know how many you currently have in the neighborhood?
In our home, we have nine subdivisions in our Neighborhood Association, and in this subdivision, there's only the one that's a block away on the corner of Princess and Bluebird.
Do you know how many total out of the nine?
Yes, we have three.
Three?
There's one in the Markham Manor subdivision and there's one in the Brook Park subdivision.
Thank you.
I have a question as well.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. There was a paper that the lady that just sat down held up. I didn't know if that was available for those on WebEx. It was some type of diagram?
It's a map of that area of Cardinal Heights. I emailed that three weeks ago. I was under the impression that
I think it's in our packet, but you can also point it into the camera there, maybe a little farther to your left.
Okay.
Right, yeah. I don't know if you can see that, Alicia?
I can see it now.
Okay.
Alrighty.
The brown dots represent the rental property that's registered with the city. The red dots represent rental property that is not currently registered with the city. And that orange dot, that's the STR.
Okay. Thank you.
How many rentals are there?
Total? I'd have, I don't want to waste your time, but I'd have to count them. I don't have a number for this specific area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before she sits down? Okay. Applicant, would you like to use any of your, your remaining time?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question for the applicant.
Okay. Yeah, for sure.
What are your plans, what are the plans for call-ins and emergencies, being out of town, living in another state? There's a 60-minute rule guideline.
I have three relatives that live within the area, one in the John Barrow area, one just right down the road on 12th and Pine, and another one that lives off of Reservoir and Green Mountain. Well, Green Mountain and Rodney Park, I'm sorry, that all have access to the location.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before the applicant sits down?
And I would like to make another comment as well.
Okay.
The reason why I suggested, or I wanted to do the Airbnb was, I didn't want to rent because I know we were coming back and I know renting the location would be more long-term as I would need to come back to the location for family events and other projects that we have here in the location. So, that was one reason why I opted to apply for the Airbnb as well.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate you following the process. Is there a motion on this application?
I move for the approval of item Z 9717, including all staff comments and conditions except the recommendation of denial.
Second.
Director Collins, can you make sure we all understand what we're voting for since we are voting in the affirmative?
Yes, Chair. All votes for this commission has to be in the affirmative, so whenever there's a recommendation of the, from the staff for denial, and Commissioner Benton did read it, therefore, when you say you want to approve all conditions except for that of denial, a vote of yes means this development is approved and goes on the process. A vote of no denies the application by this commission.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, we've had that. Then may we have a roll call vote.
Benton?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Hart?
No.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Latur?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Thomas? Bickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
And I'll go back to Commissioner Thomas. I'll mark that as an absent on this item. So, the motion fails with three yeses and six nos.
Thank you. And applicant, if you would like to
Hello?
Excuse me, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, I'm sorry, I got dropped.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas
Have I already voted on the last applicant, application?
Commissioner Thomas, we were voting on item B. How would you like to vote on item B?
Yes, I am in support of the application.
Okay, so that changes the vote. It is still a vote of denial, four yeses and six nos.
Thank you applicant for applying, and if you want to give a staff about your due process, then they will walk you through what you can do to go before the Board of Directors. So, thank y'all both, or all three of y'all for coming out for this item. The item has been denied, so thank you again for coming out. We will move on to item C.
Item C, file number Z 9680A. This is the Rock City Wraps PDC located 11415 West Markham Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone this 0.34 acre property located at 11415 West Markham Street from C3 General Commercial District to PDC Planned Development Commercial, to allow for the development of a vehicle service business, which is Rock City Wraps with outdoor display. According to the applicant, the business focuses primarily on the restyling of automobiles and services are performed inside a climate-controlled facility. The proposed retail hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and work on vehicles is performed 24 hours a day. The property currently contains a former branch bank building with a drive-thru and paved parking areas. The bank teller area has been converted into an office space and the former drive-thru canopy areas have been enclosed for vehicle workshop areas. The existing building has been overlaid by metal framing and plywood enclosure which surrounds the entire structure. The modifications and renovations to the building have been performed by the applicant without seeking or retaining the building permit from the city prior to beginning the work. The site is located within a fully developed area of West Markham Street and is primarily surrounded by C3 zone properties on all sides, with Rock Creek along the south perimeter. In further south is R2 Zone Properties, which is the Birchwood neighborhood. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing structure and construct a new building on the site. Site plan shows the new building to be 5,525 square feet, which would be 65 feet by 85 feet centered on the site. The applicant notes the new structure will be approximately 24 feet in height and have corrugated or decorative metal exterior finish materials. Site plan shows the new structure to be set back from 25 feet from the south property line, 45 feet from the north property line, seven feet and 17 feet from the east and west side property lines respectively. The applicant proposes a rotating vehicle display trailer for completed vehicles along the northwest side of the parking lot bordering West Markham Street. According to the applicant, the auto turntable is used to showcase completed vehicles and create marketing vehicles with the vehicle rotating. The display trailer's been parked on the site without seeking the permit or variance request from the city prior to its placement. The site currently has 14 parking places, 14 parking spaces along the north and west sides of the property. The proposed site plan shows removal of the parking along the west side of the site and reconfiguring the existing spaces along the north perimeter of the property. The reconfigured spaces include eight parking spaces total. This includes one handicap space and one space for the rotating vehicle display trailer. The proposed parking reconfiguration again includes eight spaces, which is less than the typical required minimum of 27 spaces as required by Section 36502 3G for this type of use, and staff believes the amount of parking proposed is not sufficient to serve the proposed use. A two-lane access drive exists at the northwest corner of the site from West Markham Street and circles the building. The access drive continues along the south boundary of the property, connecting this property with the adjacent commercial properties to the east and west. The access drives drive access, cross-access between this property and the properties to the east and west, allowing access to the traffic located along Markham Street to the east. Cross-access easements are platted along the east and west property lines, and the proposed site plan shows use of the existing paved drives and parking along West Markham Street. Staff does not support the requested PDC zoning for this property. Staff does not view the request as reasonable. Although there are other auto-related uses in this immediate area, staff feels that the site is too small for the proposed use. The applicant's proposed outdoor vehicle display and proposed reduction in overall parking spaces leaves very little area for staff, for vehicles for staff parking or vehicles awaiting service or waiting to be picked up after service. The proposed parking on the site is well under the minimum number of parking spaces typically required for this type of use. Of the six other commercial properties located within the relatively small commercial area along the south side of West Markham Street, between the Energy Substation and Rock Creek, in the Rock Creek intersection with West Markham Street, three of these properties are currently occupied by auto-service type uses, with the easternmost property containing a large auto-service mall type development with car wash, auto detailing, dent damage repair, auto rental collision center, and an auto tune-up shop. Staff feels that there are enough auto-related uses within this small commercial area and that the proposed use will only add to that proliferation of auto-service uses. Staff believes a small property is better suited for a small retail use or small office or branch bank type use, as has been historically. Additionally, the applicant has begun and continued construction on the existing building, including electrical work, without obtaining a building permit. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested PDC zoning.
Thank you. I see the applicant is present and at the podium, so applicant, per usual, you will have 20 minutes to present your application.
I do have some hard copies I'd like to pass out first.
Sure.
Just wanted to confirm that the Commissioner's online was able to get what Mr. Jordan sent out in your email, should it be the exhibits that were scanned in?
Yes, I have received those.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, applicant.
I'd like to touch on a few things the staff, I guess, formally recommended for this site. They initially deferred the approval, saying that this location would be better suited for a local bank. So, I have passed out an exhibit that shows nine closed banks within a one-mile radius of this site plan. So, I don't know why they recommended that, but it shows clearly that this area is not suitable for any type of bank, drive-thru, retail, mortgages, what have you. They've all closed in this area and moved on. Secondly, I'd like to focus this on the vehicle turner. The current zoning that we're under is for a sign company, and that's C3. We've been operating out of this location for several years, will continue to operate in that capacity as a sign company. The wrap portion and the specifics of this rezoning are primarily focused on the outdoor display aspect and the approval for that, which again, I passed out a exhibit showing vehicle turner in question and what its use is and how it's functioning. The vehicle turner, although, is out front. It doesn't get used on a daily basis. For instance, we just finished an ambulance that's too heavy, too large, food trucks are too heavy, too large, fire trucks, et cetera. The device is also mobile, so we take it to state fairs, county fairs, food truck festivals, things like that. It gets rented out to local car dealerships to display, you know, new and upcoming cars. So, out of the year, the vehicle turner might get, you know, one-third of its use. Otherwise, it's either dormant, not active, or just not able to use it due to the other types of vehicles that we are working on, like city buses. The outdoor display, as well as the turntable, is a primary focus of why we're seeking the rezoning, so that we can accurately display those larger vehicles, be it dump trucks, ambulances, fire trucks, et cetera, out in front of the property so that, you know, the retail traffic that they received on Markham is accepted. They're just like an LED sign or just like Home Depot putting Christmas trees out there. Those are our products. So, we're just seeking approval for outdoor display. Again, it has nothing to do with the physical business, which is a sign company, not a wrap shop. I mean, a wrap shop I mean, a wrap shop is part of one of the thousand things we do there. We do T-shirts, we make signs. Ironically, I made the signs for this property and the Boys and Girls Club next door, so a lot of our work is off-site, physically at the location of, you know, the museum or Children's Hospital, any of those areas that we're working in. So again, this is just to showcase and market vehicles that are completed, has minimal use, and the other things that they've, I guess, had questions, concerns on have already been addressed prior to the submittal of this. So I'll yield my time back and answer any questions later.
Does the Commissioners, do the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Commissioner. Yes, sir. You mentioned that the facility would only be used a third of the time annually. How much is that use, you know, quantity-wise? How much traffic flow, how much, many cars, vehicles, et cetera, will be going in and out of that facility or building?
Yeah, let me clarify. What I meant by was the vehicle turner will have a third of the use out of an annual year. Does that make sense?
So a third of the wraps will be done in that particular building, everything else will be off-site?
No, sir. I'm speaking primarily about the vehicle turner, which is exterior of the property, the picture I've given you there. I'm saying that because of the larger vehicles we do, city buses, ambulances, fire trucks, things like that, that can't possibly be loaded onto that or driven onto that, the vehicle turner will be dormant at that time, meaning it's just sitting there, it's not in use, it's not spinning around. The property or the sign company will be 365, yeah, to answer that question.
So it'd be very, pretty much, that third would be minimum, only on heavy-duty equipment or commercialized heavy-duty equipment that can't be done at that particular site?
I think we still have some confusion here. So we wrap semi-trucks, okay? And we wrap hospital buildings, like you've seen Children's Hospital, St. Vincent's Hospital. Those are physical items, and they're too large for our property, or we go to the customer as convenience, because it's a, you know, hospital, okay? So that's what I meant by, we are away from that shop quite often, okay? We go out for weeks at a time to go up to Fayetteville, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, you know, just, we spread around the region. But to answer your question, we work on vehicles inside, as well as produce T-shirts and signs and banners and all that stuff, inside the building. That goes on, on a daily basis. But the vehicle turner, which is what we're specifically applying for the rezoning of, that only gets minimal or limited use because only certain amount of vehicles can be driven onto that apparatus. It has a weight limit of 10,000 pounds. I mean, I could put a full-size truck on there at best.
Thank you. That's my point I was getting at, that it would be minimum, it won't be a heavy-duty traffic flow to that. Thank you.
Right.
I have a question for staff. So seeking the change from C3 to a Plan Development Commercial, one of the variances is allowing this turner to be placed out front of the premises. Is this a sign variance, or is this a, how is this being deemed? Is this a...
Display in that manner is allowed in C4, so that's why it's a part of the Plan Development.
Got it.
I do also want to clarify for the Commissioners that at this time, I do not believe Mr. Moore can correct me, that there's not a limited timeframe set on the outdoor display. The applicant talked about it being of limited use, but that does not preclude him, if approved, that to use it as needed. I do understand what he talked about with the Commissioners, that it's not going to be able to house the vehicles of certain sizes, but there was no proposed limit on timeframes of use of the display or the amount of use of the display?
No, not in the application, there's not.
So as it stands, that's not a condition of the approval?
Right, I got that. So under the current zoning, by using this display, is a non-conforming use, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What kind of, I guess this question's more for the applicant, what kind of impediment to visibility does this structure cause for people trying to get into and out of your property? Is there a site, you know, impediment?
Not at all. As you can see from the site plan that's on the screen right now, that the previous, you know, tenants put a very large green space ahead of the end of the parking row, so there's no obstructions whatsoever, either with or without it there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other Commissioners have any questions?
I live in this area, so I drive down Markham all the time, and this use seems to fit for that part of West Markham. And it's odd to me that staff is recommending denial, but I think, so there are a couple of concerns. The parking, you're reduced down to just seven or eight spaces, so how much parking do you need and what happens if those seven or eight spaces are used up with vehicles that have already been finished and waiting on pickup?
So that is, that is part of the future plans, if, you know, this passes, as well as the other structure being built. We have, after being there for close to three years now, we have learned that our neighbor, which is a car wash, who does not allow their, you know, the people that are using the car wash, they're forced to leave the property. They can't wipe their car down. They're supposed to get out of there since they're done spending money. So where do you think they go? They go directly into our parking lot.
Right.
So everything from someone, somebody parking their car next to a car that we had just completed, and one of the main items that we do routinely is to conceal the car in a matte finish, okay? So it's a very dry, and it can't take any Armorol and anything else. These people pull away from the car wash, and they just haze Armorol everywhere. So immediately after we get done with this car and it's waiting to be picked up, it gets damaged because of that, or it gets door-dinged, or people pull out from Popeyes and they see an empty space there, and they throw their garbage out, you know, because they're going to pull over and eat lunch in our parking lot, and then they throw the garbage out. But the main culprit is the car wash. And if I go out there and ask them to politely move, I get cussed out, you know? And so when they move from the side of the building, then they see the spots in the front of the building, which we try to keep clean. We're not Goodyear, we're not, we're not Guattini and all these other companies that have half-broken cars in the parking lot. We try to keep a clean environment, and I would honestly say we have the most open and clean lot on Markham because of that. But that being said, it's inviting the people to pull in and get on their phone, you know, take a break, pull in from McDonald's or what have you, and most importantly, from the car wash. So if you look at the west side of the building, there's three little parking blocks. Those are basically barricades, so when the people leave the car wash, they won't clip the building. There is an oversized dual shared access, where you see the incoming arrows there. So there's plenty of room, it's oversized. The second thing is our twice-down-the-road neighbor Papa John's and Wingstop have utilized this parking lot as their exit for their semi-trucks. So having cars parked there in those parking spots have allowed them, well, in this case, the cars weren't there. They've clipped cars, they've run over, and I don't mean run into trees, I mean run over trees. So they have no respect for the back alley and the access of our lot and/or the parking lots chewed up because of those. So this would eliminate multiple steps.
Let me ask my question a different way. Are eight spaces enough?
I've actually revised that and added four more in the back, and I would argue that this committee or prior committee has approved both Rent and Roll, which is recently built, and Precision Tune. Both of them have the exact same footprint, and both of them have the exact same parking spaces. That's what we've proposed.
Yeah, this use seems to fit along that, along that south side of Markham. My guess is there is, it wouldn't surprise me if there were not immediate conflict between the applicant and the city, just because of the whole permitting process and the fact that you didn't pull permit. So I'm going to just look over all that today, and you can figure that out with, and I'm going to, I generally am going to support this because I think that the use fits, and it's a super-small lot, so there's, you're not going to have a ton of folks that are just clamoring for a lot that's .2 acres or whatever this is. And then if, again, if you look at all of the uses, from the car wash to the Enterprise to the Dent Doctor, to all of those uses along the south side of Markham, it seems to fit. So I'm going to overlook all the work you did without pulling a permit and let the appropriate folk, you can deal with the appropriate folks on that, but I think it fits, so I'm going to support it. The parking would be the only thing that is of a concern to me, and again, this is more small business than it is retail. So I don't know if there's a cross-parking easement that runs along the south side of Markham. There's obviously cross-access. My guess is, over the last however many decades this subdivision has been in place, parking, the parking's worked itself out along that south side. So those are just my thoughts on it. Am I missing anything, staff, other than the parking? And to me, the little trailer there that spins the cars is not a big deal. Am I missing anything else? Okay.
I'd add one more point to your question. So when we work on vehicles, we immediately take them from the parking lot and inside the building. So much like the car wash, who has no parking spaces, the car wash is utilizing the space that's allowed for the car wash or the vacuum cleaners or whatever. We act in the same sense. So we pull the car inside the building to work on it. The reason why that's important is because, and I would also clarify again for, I don't know how many times I can count this, but we did pull a permit two years ago prior to beginning work. The city was closed during that time because it was corona, and, you know, that's all we could do online was apply, okay? So we did apply for a permit, so I'd like to set that on the record again, that it was applied for. After we received over $70,000 in vehicle theft, catalytic converters, busted-out windows, spare tires, the seats of, you know, even the seats of the vehicle got stolen. So that's why we have chosen to go this route versus the open parking lot that we had currently, the car wash, the working-on cars, people not banging into them or spraying Armorol and stuff like that. You know, these are very sensitive cars. People are spending a lot of money to get their car a certain way. So we accept the car at the time that it's ready, as we're handing off the next one. So there's a constant give-and-take. So we're not just stacking up cars in the parking lot. We did try that, and unfortunately, one of our customers took about a $30,000 hit with all their catalytic converters getting stolen, because the cars were sitting there, and it was open season. In addition to the automotive complex, there was a former vehicle wrap company called HD Wraps. They were half a block down the street. They have closed in the last two years. So we, it's, again, it's a one-for-one. We're not adding anything, we're not taking anything away.
Thank you, applicant. Any other questions from the Commission?
Yes. How do you, what is the plan for when you're closing the business during the day-to-day operations with the vehicles? Will they all be brought inside of that location?
The vehicles will remain inside until the customer picks them up. And quite often, again, these are ambulances, and these are, again, these are city-owned vehicles, so they're advantageous for everyone here to play ball. These are, I'm about to start school resource vehicles, which is 24, middle school, elementary, high school. Every school in Little Rock is going to get a school resource vehicle, so it's a Little Rock Police Department vehicle, which we all know how much gear's in there. So yes, they remain inside the building, under 24-hour surveillance and all that good stuff.
Thank you.
I think we had an online question?
Mr. Chairman, this is Latour.
Yes, sir.
Your current answers either speeches. I'm trying to, trying to figure something good out of this deal. I usually agree with Commissioner Hart, but the $64 question is, does it fit on the site? No. Does it have no parking places? No. Did it have building permits? No. It's time to end it. Let's vote.
I'd like to clarify to him that we did pull a permit, again.
You made that clear for the record. Is there any other question for the Commissioners or the applicant? Hearing done. Can we have a motion, please?
Move for the approval of item Z 9680-A, including all staff comments and conditions except for the recommendation of denial.
Second.
And as Director Collins stated in the previous vote, same applies. Can we have a roll call, please?
Benton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
She voted yes.
I think she needs to turn her video on.
Okay. Commissioner Hodge, can you turn your video on, please, and vote? We'll come back to Commissioner Hodge.
Latour?
No.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
And Vogel?
No. Can we go back to Commissioner Hodge, please, one more time? We were able to hear you, Commissioner Hodge, we could not see your vote.
Oh, okay.
I think you'll have to turn on your video to affirm your vote. We might be having technical difficulties, so we'll give her a few moments. We've heard your vote.
All right. Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
A yes vote?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So motion passes eight to.
Thank you, applicant. We appreciate your time. I think we're on to item eight. I think Walters is going to give us a rundown of it, and we have one card that would like to speak in opposition and one that is in support of.
Would you like to just discuss the issue, the changes that are being requested that have opposition to it? Just those two changes? Do you want a presentation on the full package?
Well, as this is a land use amendment plan, I guess we will go ahead and hear the entire land use suggestion, then we'll discuss the two items in opposition. Is that okay, or do you think that's not efficient?
I mean, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure what you, what the Commission's pleasure was.
Yes, sir.
There seems to be opposition on two of the items, but not on the, not on the rest of the package, so that was the reason why I brought that up.
Everybody should have received an email today from the opposition to two of the many changes that were recommended. So as Mr. Malone speaks, maybe he can point out the changes that are in opposition that will clarify for us, and then once the opposition has a chance to speak, we can dive into those specifically.
Okay. I'm going to start from east to west then, and then the first changes are in the area south of Little Rock Port, from basically the Sweet Home Area to the Arkansas River. The majority of that area, the change area one, and that big hatched area, is currently shown on the city's land use plan as agricultural, and the proposed change is to... the proposed change is to show that as industrial. Change two is an area that's shown as public institutional now, and it's also to change that to industrial. The public institutional is the current site of one of the antennas for the Little Rock National Airport, which is being moved at the cost of the Little Rock Port Authority to another location so that they can market this whole area for industrial uses. This entire area is, is in their long-range plan to be continuation of industrial uses related to the Little Rock Port. The third area of, of change is basically from the levee to the Arkansas River. It's proposed to be changed to park open space. Entire ownership is owned by the federal government. It's where the Lock and Dam is in, in the park for that, related to that dam on the Arkansas River at that location. So again, the entire ownership is currently owned by the federal government and it's a proposal to be park open space. The, let me get the next area is, is the area, oh, I might go, skip one. Sorry. This is the area, this, the next area to the west is the area in between the freeway, the Pine Bluff Freeway, Interstate 530, and the Sweet Home area or Highway 365. The proposed changes, changes one through four are changes from single-family to mining with a, an area park open space immediately along some of the boundaries of that to where areas that are, would continue to be shown as single-family. All the areas one through four are areas that are owned by mining interests currently. So that's the reason for that, that change. The areas five and six are also owned by mining interests, and they would like their ownership to be shown as mining. Currently, both five and six are shown as industrial. One is on Dixon and one is further up off the, behind where the highway department has a maintenance facility, for those who might be familiar with this area, off of Dixon Road, excuse me, south of the freeway, south of the city. Areas seven and eight are two areas that are shown on the land use plan for commercial and residential mid-density. They were shown on the plan for many years because on the, there's a proposal to connect Dixon Road, the rest of the way across to 365 and continue Dan Thomas South. So you'd have an arterial arterial intersection at some point in the future, and that was the reason to show commercial there. There is no money to make those connections. There doesn't seem to be any interest after the meetings we had in the area of any of those property owners to make that happen. And there, and the, and the eastern part of that area is already got some homes on it. So we're proposing to do away with that commercial and residential mid-density on the land use plan and show it as residential low-density since the, the majority of that area is platted and developed as tracks, which have predominantly residential homes on them. So that's the changes in the, in the Sweet Home Higgins portion of the area. The, the next area is the area in between Arch Street and Interstate 530.
Mind if we go to the final one first?
The, the westernmost one?
Yes, and then we'll come back to the third one for clarification purposes.
This is the westernmost change area. Let me move the map a little bit. The area one is an, is a change from residential low-density to industrial. It's a, about the, about a third of that is a developed industrial use. The other two-thirds of that is own, is the same ownership. They just haven't developed that portion of their ownership. And it is the only way that they can get access to a road without going through someone else's property is to go, go to the south there. So we're proposing to show all that is industrial. There is industrial further to the east along Arch Street in this location where there's a couple of other industrial businesses on the frontage of Arch Street near Dixon. The, the larger area, area two, is an area which has got several ponds on it. So a lot of that area is currently water. There are two or three businesses in there. There's also a couple residences. You can get rent time on the, on the ponds or you used to be into, able to in the past. And we're proposing to show that as residential, from residential low to mixed use. Area three is to recognize a commercial use that's on Holero Springs Road. So that would be changed from residential low to neighborhood commercial. Change four is also to recognize an existing use or a commercial building that's in, that's along Holero, that's used as an office-type use. So again, to recognize an existing condition. Area five and six are similar changes on Guyer Springs Road at the corner there. There's been a commercial quasi-public use there in the past. And they came through the subdivision process to this body when they were doing their development, actually. And then to the north is a residential use which has a multiple unit structure on it. So that's the reason for the residential mid. So all those are to recognize existing conditions. Change number seven is to recognize an existing church on Sandstone. Their ownership and there's, there is a church there. Change eight is to change an area from residential low to neighborhood commercial. There is a, there is a, there is a residence on part of it. The rest of it is in a, an events center kind of structure, metal structure. And then area nine is predominantly a wooded area, area that is currently shown on the city's plan as neighborhood commercial, and it's changed it to residential low. We got the request at one of the meetings in the area from folks that they didn't want that to be commercial at that location. So that's the reason why that was added. So the, and I think you have the actual property owners here today that are supporting that change to, so that we can verify that if you want to. And then the last area, the area in between.
Hold on one second, Walter. Just to make sure, we looked at three maps so far, and of those three maps, no opposition.
Correct.
No desire to change the map as it is presented. So the only opposition is on this fourth map.
Correct.
So he'll take us through each one of these items, and then we'll come back to the two items that were requested to be changed.
Okay. Areas one and two, one is from Service Trades District to mining, and the other one is residential low to mining. Both of those areas are owned by mining interests. And so we're proposing to show both of them as mining. Area three is an area that's currently shown as mining. A portion of that is owned by a mining interest, the western portion. The eastern portion is owned by four property owners who made it very vocal in their meetings out in the area that they wanted that residential low. So that's where that came from. But the, and this is one of the ones that you have someone to speak against this change is there, is number three. Number four is again, an area owned by a mining interest. We're showing it as light industrial, and they would like it shown as mining. We're proposing to show it as mining. Area five is an area also shown as light industrial on Dixon Road that was pointed out to us through the process by one of the neighboring property owners that there's an asphalt company on this. There's a pretty heavy industrial use from the city's standpoint. So we want to, there is also other industrial uses on the property, not as intense as that. But we, but we want to show that whole area as industrial as a result of that. Area six was also a request that came out of the meetings out in the area. Area six is an existing mobile home park, or manufact, yeah, mobile home park. And that owner was very definite that he wanted it shown as mobile home, not as mixed use, that, that that was serving a need and needed to stay in place. So that's what area, area six is. Area seven is an area of mixed use and mining. They're proposing to show, change to industrial. That's an area that has been acquired by a company for a private landfill, and that's the reason for industrial there. The, we have, we did get recently, in the last week, one contact from an adjacent property owner against that. They don't, don't want a landfill next to them. But that, but that's, that happened in the last week, just so you, to keep you up to date on that. Area eight is a, is a long Dixon Road, and there's a church and at least one single-family house in this stretch. There's also a small portion of it that's owned by a mining interest. Majority of the mining interest is south of the, of this. So the frontage on, the proposal is to make the frontage there mixed use, continue that mixed, mixed use designation further to the west. Then area nine is the city's landfill. It's currently shown on, on the land use plan as, some of it is park open space and some of it is residential low. And so that would be changed to PI since it's city-owned. Area 10 is another area changing from residential low, in this case to industrial. It is a industrial-type waste disposal company. They don't necessarily dispose of all their, their stuff on-site, but they may store it at least temporarily on-site. So we felt like industrial was a better designation for this, that, that site. Area 11 is an area shown on the land use plan currently as residential low. We're proposing to show it as light industrial. This is a site of a former quarry that's still owned by a quarry company. And this is your other, the, the other site that is being, that you have someone to speak against. And I believe there, well, their communication indicates they would want this to also be shown as mining. Area 12 is an area changed from residential low to neighborhood commercial. There is a, one business there, and then there's also residential at the site. This is again, as this area develops and becomes more densely developed, this is going to become a more and more important intersection. So that's part of the reason to show this as a neighborhood commercial to give opportunity for businesses. Area 13 is an area from mixed use to, in residential low to light industrial. This is one ownership. There, there's a company that's actually physically located in the middle of this site, very well buffered by themselves, keeping a lot of trees and things in between where they're currently a construction-related business. And so they would like, they've made it very clear, they'd like their property to be shown as light industrial through this process. The area 14 is along, excuse me, Pratt Road. The, this is just east of Dixon. Be changed from residential low to light industrial. Light industrial, if you've driven down Pratt, especially on the north side, there is a lot of businesses that would be classified as light industrial up and down this portion of, or almost all of Pratt Road. And so this would really be to allow expansion of that potential use. The, most of those are further to the east that are in place. The area 15 is really just more of a graphic cleanup. The, the parcels that, that that's part of are really all to the north, and they're all larger tracks that are predominantly residential. The light industrial tends to all be back towards Pratt Road and 145th Street when you get across the freeway. Sixteen is an area that those property owners also have property on Arch Street. They have not developed this property. They, they haven't, they have desires to develop it similar to how they developed their ownership along Arch Street, which would be commercial and businesses along Pratt and then residential further. They actually asked that it be mixed use. They liked that designation. They specifically asked for that to be mixed use. The area 17 is in a sense a cleanup also because you'd have a gap of residential in between the mixed use and the residential, and the light industrial. So we change about three tracks that are predominantly vacant from residential low to light industrial, which be again, an expansion of what the primary use pattern is along Pratt. Area 18 is to recognize those uses that are on Pratt. They actually go further north than the land use plan indicates. So this covers the area of their ownership and their use. If you drive back in there, you'll see backs of 18-wheelers and, and other things related to their businesses that are on this, this land. And so that's what, that's what 18 is trying to represent.
Very quick, concise summary of what the plans committee worked on this summer. And then the staff went out and had public hearings with the folks in the ETJ to get their input. And you can see that the vast majority of the parcels that we are seeking to change the land use plan are not contentious and have been readily accepted by everyone. So I think what we would be prudent to do now is hear from the opposition who has, as Mr. Malone noted, item three and 11 on this map currently being shown, that have concerns about having mining converted to residential low-density. And then 11, having residential low-density, which is currently a quarry that's not in use, to light industrial. So would we like to bring up the opposition at this time, Director Collins? Would that be the prudent thing to do? So?
Excuse me, Chair. Can you go back to that, the one you just said previous before the?
The 11 or the three? Okay, three on this map is currently M, mining. And due to the fact that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Malone, but the understanding that I have is it is a road that goes north to south. I can't remember the road. I think it begins with a P.
It's P, P L, P, P I E L.
Okay. And on that road, on the east side, there are structures, homes that are owned by the mining interest, a locally-owned entity here in Arkansas. This is not a multinational conglomerate. This is a Arkansas entity. They own those residences and lease them out.
No, they, they, um, they own the property on the west side.
Oh, the west.
Homes are on the east side.
Okay.
They are privately owned.
Okay. I had that backwards in my mind. So I apologize. So can you say that one more time for us, Mr. Malone?
On the west side.
On the west side, the mining interest owns that property.
The, the mining interest own the east side, which is proposed not to be changed. And then on the east side, there are about.
Used east twice. So let's go back.
On the, on the west side, the eastern part of that hatched area, on the west side of Peel, there are, there are lots.
Yes.
One, one which is not developed, which is the northernmost lot.
Correct.
And then the, then there are either three or four lots.
South.
Yes. And though, most of those are owned by one larger family of relatives, and they were very adamant that they wanted that all to be residential. The mining interests also own property that backs, the backs, that these houses would back up to, or the tracks that these houses are on would back up to, back to the, to the lots of the houses that, that are on the east side of Brittany Court. So they also own what would be the western portion of area three. Okay. The, the eastern portion of area three is owned by other, by other private individuals.
Okay. Does that somewhat clarify or confuse further the situation? Okay. So we're talking about three, and we're talking about 11. That's the opposition that sent the letter to us today. And, you know, I think it would be prudent to hear from them and their concerns and, you know, per our usual. you know, per our usual customary, you know, applicant, y'all, or opposition, y'all can have 20 minutes to voice y'all's, you know, concerns.
Chairman Vogel, Commissioners Lucas Hargraves. I'm here on behalf of my client, McGeorge Contracting Company. I'm joined by Thomas Dickinson, CEO, and Edward Jackson, Land Manager. As a former member of this body, I have great respect for the duty you all perform for the city. We'll endeavor to be brief, but this is an important issue to us. First of all, I'd like to compliment your staff on what is a massive undertaking. I want to note, in particular, Walter Malone's role. We did work closely with him, as we have a lot of property in this area. And I also want to note that the Future Land Use Plan is an important document. It's often dismissed, is not being that relevant, you know, as compared to zoning. But it is the guide for the city as to how this property, how properties in the city and around the city are to be developed over time. So we do think it's important, therefore, our presence this evening. For the reasons we're going to get into in just a minute, we think that both the Area Three and Area Eleven deserve the mining classification. We think that's the appropriate designation. And I'm going to ask Thomas Dickinson to come forward and make a few remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, Lucas. And again, appreciate the Plan and Commission's efforts on this. And before we start talking, appreciate your time and consideration. I guess my office is in Sweet Home Arkansas. I'm located inside the ETJ. The McGeorge Contracting Company operates several businesses in central Arkansas and in the ETJ. We have Granite Mountain Quarries, Rallake Construction, Cranford Asphalt, and McGeorge Contracting. On any given day, we would have up to 200 people, full-time team members, working in this zone. And to that end, we're constantly searching and identifying other properties to continue our operations and plan for the future. I guess we've already talked about Number Three and Number Eleven on the map. Number Eleven is already a quarry before we purchased it, and it's adjacent to the landfill. So we thought that would be a mining opportunity for a land use map. We thought that would be something that, that we would all be aligned in. And on Number Three, on Brittany, or on Peel Road, we understand that there's lots of landowners, or a couple landowners on the east side, but on the west side of Number Three, that is, I guess, McGeorge Contracting property that is currently thought of as a mining designation. So we were asking for that as well, if that's possible. And the other, this is Edward Jackson, our, our head land guy.
Yes, thank you. Well, you've already described pretty much where it is, but if there's any questions about the property in general, I can probably answer it. This area in particular, with Number Three, you know, it is geologically part of the same hill we are currently quarrying. While we mean, you know, we won't get to that area for many, many years, it is the direction we're going. And between now and then, hopefully, we'll have discussions with property owners in the area. And, but, you know, it is a part of our plan to get to that.
Add one more, one more note. We've, we've been working in the area. We have two quarries running on either side of 530. We've been crushing and sizing a rock since the 1960s. So we're, we're not new to the area. We've been here for a long time.
Thank you all for your comments. I think it'd be wise of us as a commission to ask a few questions. And are there any questions by the commission right now?
I have one. Area Eight, we're not discussing it, but it was mining to mixed use, but it's contiguous with Area Three. Geologically, is Area Three and Area Eight similar?
Is Eight the one just south of Dixon?
It looks like it is.
They're a little different. I think that has clay on it, and Three has hard rock on it.
Okay.
There's two different types of mines, sir.
I'm sorry?
Two different types of mines. It's a clay mine and a quarry.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Questions by the commission?
I'm a little confused about ownership of the property. I wish we had almost a plat map up there. So I guess there's no way to take, there's not a, there's not a clear boundary if we're wanting to change land use. There's not a clear boundary on what the mine owns and where the residential...
There is. I mean, there's obvious lots where individuals own that they might have a house on, and then we own, like, the whole strip behind them and in front of them and above them. We're kind of all around them.
Can we pull up a plat map, possibly?
I mean, and I don't even know that that's a practical way to, to form a land use plan. It probably isn't, but...
The McGeorge Company owns the east side. That's, the line, the eastern line of that hatched area is the road, okay? So that everything on the east side is owned by the mining company.
Everything on the east side of Peel Road is owned by the mining company?
Yes. The lots are on the west side of Peel, but they, but the, the, the George Companies, because there are multiple companies, owns a tract that's actually partially shown as residential low over here and the mining. They own the land in between the backs of the parcels. They're both front on both of those roads, both on Peel and, and on Brittany. So there's, so they own a piece of property that goes down in between those two subdivisions.
Yeah.
One is, well, one maybe is only four lots, four or five lots, so maybe that's extremely called that a subdivision. But the, but the, but, but that, but they do, they own property on both sides of Peel, just not the frontage on the, on the west side of Peel. And then they, all that, that shaded area that's on the, the area Number Two is also McGeorge. I mean, some of the, there are other mining companies over there, but in this case, those are all McGeorge or parts of the McGeorge family.
So it's been, it's been zone mining for, I mean, not zone, land use mining for...
Three has been, probably for, since, probably since the eighties. Because the, the extraterritorial plan was, in this area, was re, totally redone at the same time as we redid the area in the, where Schnell is now, okay? The western, the western areas. The city hired a consulting firm, and they did the western extraterritorial area as well as the southeast. And there was, and they produced three documents, one for the northwest, northwest area, one for the southwest area, for west of the city, and then a third one for this area. And the current land use plan is still based on that document that, that was done in the 1980s. It's been amended, okay? But the, but the bulk of it was, was put in place back in the, in the eighties.
Yeah, so, so we're just talking land use here, just talking big, general planning ideas. Those who own their homes and the land that go with them, no one's going to, no one's going to take those properties and mine those properties. And those lands that the mining company owns, they have the right to mine today. So this really, I'm not really willing to drive a stake in the ground, and, I mean, this...
I think that's what I was going to...
Seems like we could leave it mining and just move on down the road.
Yeah, I think that's what I was going to contend is, you know, the big picture, I think, of this commission's role is to, and Walter spent a great amount of time talking us through the land use maps and how important they are to give our city the plan for the future of what we're going to use our lands for. And so to, you know, have a public meeting is the most important thing, to allow the citizens to speak is so critical, to give them the due process, to vocalize what their concerns are. I think the concern is not looking at the biggest picture possible to say, we have an Arkansas entity that employs many people in the state, in the city, in this area, and we're asking to change from what the usage is to have residential uses. And Three, to me, is, is kind of what Commissioner Hart was saying, is kind of we're driving a stake into the ground to ask to change what it was to something different, but the ask of the opposition right now is to keep it as it is. And I, for one, am very, very happy that we got to where we are with so few, you know, issues. And here we are, ready to, you know, just have a vote on our land use. And Three, to me, just does not make any sense to remove it from mining when everything almost around the north, the east, and the south is already mining, except for a small bit of mixed use that is along a frontage road. And, you know, I think our role as the commission is to, you know, listen to the citizens and take the best course of action for our city possible so that we can have, you know, invested corporate citizens who, you know, want to employ folks, who want to, you know, do what is needed for a healthy and vibrant city. Going to Eleven, I'm a little more reluctant to, you know, say that that is definitely not a residential low use, if it's an actual quarry, you know? But having it adjacent to the city dump and, you know, other proposed light industrial, again, this is a land use map, and we can amend it in the future. And, you know, I hope we can find a compromise tonight and maybe make a amendment to this proposal to keep our corporate citizens, you know, vested in this area without having to deal with matters in the future that are complicated when it's right here before us. And, you know, I have said my piece, and I'll let the other commissioners say theirs as well. Any other commissioners have concerns about Three or Eleven? Seems like there's no other concerns to all the other...
Question.
Yes.
And I hear what you're saying, actually agree with what you're saying. The issue is, on the vote, can we fix it in such a way where we will amend this in six, say, in Three, to keep it mining rather than residential low? And Number Eleven, I think you said that to move it from residential low to the low industrial?
You could make a motion just on one of them at a time about changing from what is proposed in the package. And then, depending on how you, how those motions go, because they would be making amendments to the proposal, and then you would ultimately be making a motion, if you approved them, one or, or both of them, then you would be making, the final motion would be to approve the amended package.
I think, you know, on Three, we'd make a motion not to change mining to residential low and keep it as is. And to not change Eleven, keep it from residential low to light industrial. And then in the future, as the opportunity arises, maybe the opposition would like to come back and adjust the land use plan. And, you know, we really wouldn't be making substantial changes here. You'd be keeping mining on Three, and you'd be doing the recommendation on Eleven. And I don't know if the opposition is agreeable to that, but, you know, at a point where we're so close to, you know, getting 95-plus percent of this land use to the next step, I mean, to me, the land use is the foundation of all the decisions that we are supposed to be, you know, basing our, you know, future usage on. And it's, it's something that I can't thank the staff enough for taking on through my tenure. And just say how much appreciation I have for the staff for, you know, endeavoring these projects, because they're not easy. And we started this many, many, many months ago, and they had the public hearings, and we've had Plans Committee meetings about it. So, you know, I just don't want to upset kind of how we have worked so hard to get to this point. Opposition, what would y'all's ideal, I mean, we know what your ideal recommendation is based upon your statement. You want both of them to go, one to stay and one to go to mining. Would that be a reasonable compromise at this juncture? Or would that be something that, you know, we're going to fall on the sword for, so to speak?
Mr. Chairman, first, assuming that you all would keep the designation in Area Three, we appreciate you listening to us, taking into account all of the factors. You know, we continue to think that Eleven, you know, having been a quarry, makes sense for mining. But understand, you have a big document in front of you tonight that's the result of a lot of hard work from staff, and you all need to proceed. So, you know, with regard to Eleven, you know, we've, we've made our comments, and we'll just leave it at that.
So would there be a motion to keep...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Latour? Yes, sir.
I guess, I guess my comment would be, number, I agree on Number Three. Number Eleven's a quarry. A quarry's going to always be a quarry. And it's going to be a mine, and it's such a minor change next to the city dump, why don't we go ahead and do Eleven at the same time?
Okay. I mean, I'm fine with it. I mean, I... Any other statements from the commission? I mean, I think if we were going to go ahead and make a motion, then it'd be to keep Three as M and then change Eleven from RL to M, since it is a quarry, is that...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart, I just wanted to ask one clarifying question about Number Three.
Yes, ma'am.
So the section that's being proposed to go to residential, it's owned for residential plats, but there are not residences on those plats? Is that what I understood?
Do you want me to answer that, Mr. Malone, or would you like to?
The eastern portion has three houses on it.
And they will still get to keep those homes, and they will still get to live in those homes. And this is a land use, this is not a zoning ordinance. This is a land use guide map. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Hodge?
It does. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Move that we keep Number Three mining.
Is there a second?
Second.
We want to vote on these individually?
I think it's what Walter suggested.
Okay.
Unless you know you got unanimity about both of them.
Keep... I can stand the motion.
Well, how about we...
Keep Three mining, I think you said to keep Number Eleven.
Eleven would go from residential low to mining.
To mining.
Yes.
Yes.
So the motion before us is to keep Three mining and to take Eleven from residential low density to mining. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second.
Then I guess we'll have a roll call vote?
Benton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
No.
Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Vickers?
Yes.
And Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes Eight, Two.
And then I think we need to have a motion for the entirety of the land use amendment. Is that correct? Okay.
I move for the approval of Item LU 2022-01, including all staff comments and conditions, including the amendments that we made.
Second.
Will we have a roll call vote, please?
Benton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Benton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
No.
Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Vickers?
Yes.
And Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes also 8 to.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments that we would like to entertain at this time? Yes, sir.
Chair, I need to present something to the Planning Commission, two items actually, that is going to come before this body at the next meeting. Just to give everybody a little bit of information, it's regarding, we're wanting to change the home occupancy guidelines to, uh, to allow business use that would be defined as a home occupation to be allowed also in accessory structures on there. So that will be an amendment of that section of zoning that will, codes that will become before you. Another item that is not necessarily in the zoning or the subdivisions of the Planning Commission, but it will be coming just for y'all to see and vote on and provide a recommendation to the board, is we're also looking to change the driveway widths. Right now, previously, it had been, and we amended them underneath a major amendment. Some of y'all weren't on this commission when it come through in our zoning codes. We call them just the Development Codes Amendment, like a 52-page ordinance that was done probably about two and a half, three years ago now. And in that, at that time, the driveway width was a minimum of, was it 20 feet or 24 feet? It was 20 feet. And so we changed it to try to include double, or two-car garages, so that that would be the minimum. But if it's less than so many feet to the right of way, then you could widen the driveway out to at least that two-car garage standard. Well, we've seen since then, we started to enforce that. There's been some pushback with developers on building some of the larger homes. That could be a three-car garage, or at least a two-car garage with the smaller garage they may use for, in some areas of town, golf carts and other small equipment. And just the placement of those, they're not building those types of homes on large ranch-style lots anymore. So they're really trying to put it in with the side yard setbacks. And so we're looking to change that to really be more of a percentage-based width, based on the overall width of the lot, you know, average. So the larger lots you get, it will be able to enlarge that up to, um, I believe, 30 or 32 feet. That will allow the larger drives to be accommodated. But that will also come before this commission to be voted on, and then we would take that for the board for action. So I'm just presenting this right now, just to let you know that it's coming, and those will be on the next agenda for your action.
Thank you. And is there an update on our SDR ordinance? Has it been kicked back to us?
It has not. There was a, they had several questions at the board on Tuesday that I addressed, and we also addressed some questions after that coming through by some of the directors. It is still on the agenda to be acted upon Tuesday. And so if any commissioners wish to be there to comment, I know the chair wanted to be there to make comments on there. They did ask a question about staffing. I did talk about what levels of staffing that would be needed for us. And, um, you know, talked about the additional staff person in our building of property maintenance, and then also talked about the equipment needed. Some of their concerns primarily was around the notices, the timeframe for notices, and when a property owner needs to come in and do something about any complaint that's driven. You know, so that may get modified. I don't know if that's enough to really send it back to this commission. Nothing has been proposed as of yet. So, uh, so Tuesday, as it stands right now, is the action day.
Thank you for the update, and thank you so much for all y'all's help. I will adjourn the meeting now.